That's what she said. So she, she said that she'll just wear a mask. And I was like, just keep your mask on. Because that's what she had texted Jason and I about today, but Jason had said, oh, I won't be there either. So I just assumed he was gonna be here. But being spring break, it doesn't surprise me that he's out of town.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Didn't invent the truth. Well, it wasn't. Or, I mean, if, if they, if they counsel for someone else.
Do you know what they're doing at Veterans Park? Someone said they're doing a bunch of work.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Uh, I wasn't by there today. I saw them.
Let me ask you. For what? Yes. I know my life.
Still working on a tree plan.
Yeah, I've noticed that at Central Park, new ones are going in, so.
It's a lot easier.
Yeah, Veterans Park took a pretty big beating. Lost some trees. I've been there like forty years.
Couple of them now.
Pretty exciting day you had.
Yeah. Two out of ten wasn't bad. I had to live with it.
Somebody. But in his mind, I think he does, all the little stumps at Central Park, like he goes and stands over and he's all proud of himself. So on Saturday, we did it, the one tree where he does it, there's a tree there now, and he like walked around that thing and walked around the thing like, what do I do now? It's hilarious to watch. Not thinking all my time on time to be able to register, I'm getting laid either. But not like, like two minutes or something. Oh, really? Might have been before my time.
Yeah, it may have been. But you're right. If he is, it's five.
Right at time.
Did these just come on? Do you turn them on, put it on?
Not yet. Well, I got all my number one seeds filled out for the first round. That's it. That's the only part of it. No, just the number one seeds.
That's probably pretty favorable.
Uh, yeah. Felt pretty confident about those picks. I haven't, haven't gone through the rest of it yet.
Let's think of a bunch of stuff to give us. I didn't get it. I think we all got one email from a person.
Oh, yeah.
Did anybody get it?
The, so, so I talked, so the emails talked. Because I reached out and said, I need more information.
Are you talking about in mine? Mine's about turned off. I think they're all turned off.
They are?
I think so, yeah. Uh, never mind.
And so.
Quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Oh, we gotta do roll call first. I'm sorry.
Danielle McKenzie, Jason Blair, Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams, Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Okay, now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Kathy, would you mind coming up here? We'll just. I'll read this. Whereas Kathy Gillette began her career with the Moore Chamber of Commerce in two thousand and six as Director of Membership Services and Sales before assuming the position of President/CEO in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Ms. Gillette has been a vital asset to the city by offering support and acting as an advocate to local businesses, helping them grow and be successful in order to build a stronger community, community. Whereas Ms. Gillette created a leadership approach that focused on fellowship and networking, resulting in membership growth from two hundred members to over seven hundred, hundred members, representing more than twenty thousand employees. And whereas Ms. Gillette gave her time by serving on a number of committees, including the Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce Executive Board of Directors, the Moore Rotary Club, the Moore Norman Technology Foundation Board of Directors, and the Mid-America Christian University Presidents' Roundtable. And whereas during her tenure with the Moore Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Gillette was awarded the Paul Harris Fellow, Fellow Award from the Foundation of Rotary International, Outstanding Chamber Leader from the Oklahoma Chamber of Commerce Executives for Membership Development and Support of OCC-E. And the Sheila Lee Executive of the Year Award for Upholding the Tradition of Outstanding Chamber Management. And whereas Kathy Gillette is well respected within the community for her loyal dedication, her dedicated services, and by her employees and peers for her steadfast friendship. And whereas the City of Moore would like to honor Ms. Gillette for advancing the civic, economic, professional, and cultural life in our city. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mark Ham, Vice Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby present this proclamation to Kathy Gillette. On behalf of the City Council, our mayor, and extend, and extended to you our congratulations and syrup, and sincere appreciation for the many years of outstanding performance and dedicated service to the community, and wish you many happy years of retirement. So thank you very much.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much.
That's right, speech.
Now we'll move to our consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March first, two thousand and twenty-one. Receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held February second, two thousand and twenty-one. Approve annual payment to the Cleveland County Assessor for the two thousand and twenty-one Visual and Spectral Program in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and eighty cents. Approve extending the term of contract for the application and utilization of the CARES Act monies with Whit O'Brien LLC from March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of three million, eight hundred forty, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Carries. Item number three is consider resolution number nine, eight, nine, two, one, canvassing the results of the special election conducted in the City of Moore, Oklahoma on March second, two thousand and twenty-one for approval of ordinance number nine, five, seven, twenty, granting a franchise to One Gas Inc., acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors, and assigns for the sale, transportation, and distribution of natural gas, and accepting the results of such special election and declaring the measure as passed.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a request from ONG. This is just the last step in the process of affirming the passing in the election in the last couple of weeks. Recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion? We've had a motion in a second. You call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt? Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item four is consider approval of a new job description for administrative specialist, public works, in the Public Works Department, and approve placement in the pay grade one oh seven of the city's salary table.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Public Works Department with Assistant City Manager Jerry Eiler is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for an administrative specialist in public works. After the recent retirement of the Public Works Administrative Assistant and the Public Works Director in December two thousand and twenty, Mr. Eiler and the two remaining members of the staff began discussing a more equitable allocation of duties and responsibilities that would ensure that the work was completed efficiently, that customer service retained its vital role in the department, and that cross-training would be more practical and productive. The solution turned out to be a new job description that would recognize responsibilities assigned for performing administrative tasks, while also taking into consideration some of the more specialized assignments in the areas of fleet, streets, and sanitation, and that provided an appropriate job title for the two remaining administrative employees. This reorganization allows us to effectively inactivate or eliminate three job descriptions: fleet administrative clerk, administrative clerk two, public works, and public works administrative assistant. Also, because this new allocation of duties ensures thorough coverage of administrative tasks in public works, there is now no need to hire a replacement for the recently retired administrative assistant. Staff recommends approval and placement of this budgeted job description in pay grade one oh seven of the city's salary table approved by council in two thousand and sixteen, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? We just need a motion.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Just item number five is consider approval of an annual renewal of software license and support agreement with DB Squared effective April first, two thousand and twenty-one through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Vice Mayor and Council, in two thousand and sixteen, the city contracted with the Johansson Group for the Classification and Compensation Study, which was approved and implemented by the council in July of two thousand and sixteen. Part of the implementation of the study included a software license and a technical support agreement. The software was a one-time purchase through DB Squared and is meant to assist the Human Resources Department with writing new job descriptions when needed in a format that allows for consistency across our classification system. The technical support agreement is renewable on an annual basis and gives us access to software upgrades released during the term of the agreement, basic technical support, and distance training for new city HR employees. The cost of the agreement remains the same and covers the period of April first, two thousand and twenty-one through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, the software continues to assist us with writing uniform job descriptors, and we are able to use the technical support provided. Staff recommends approval of this agreement. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, hearing no questions. We've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item six is consider ordinance number nine, six, eight, two, one, amending part four, chapter one, section four dash one oh two of the Moore Municipal Code by adding progressive scale to the minimum fine allowed for each subsequent conviction for violation of this section, providing for the severability and provide for repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, what this ordinance is doing is adding a progressive scale to the minimum fine, similar to what we did last time with the noisy animal ordinance. Animal Control notified me that they have the same issues with animals at large. We think that this will hopefully cure that problem of repeat offenders by having the, each progressive conviction have the minimum fine increase.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item seven is consider ordinance number nine, six, nine, two, one, amending section six dash three oh one, part six, chapter three of the Moore Municipal Code by correcting the fine threshold for the right to a jury trial as provided by state law, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, while doing the animal control ordinances the last month or so, I noticed that this ordinance here was out of date and not in compliance with state law. So what I did was, instead of actually putting down the amount, currently we have two hundred dollars, state law is five hundred. What I put in our ordinance is the amount specified under Title eleven, section twenty-seven dash one one nine. That way, if there is any further changes in state law, there's a change of the statute, it'll be, basically, it would be rectified in our ordinance as well. So it'll rectify that problem.
All right.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item eight, consider approval of a sports association agreement for the baseball program held at Buck Thomas Park for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two season.
Vice Mayor and Council, this agreement is between the City of Moore, Moore Parks Recreation Department, and the Moore Youth Baseball Association. It's an annual agreement that spells out what is obliged by each one of the associations and what, what needs to be done and regulated by each one.
Any questions?
I know in the past, more with softball than baseball, but we get complaints from some residents about the lights being left on. Is there anything?
That has been dealt with in here.
Okay.
That and the music.
Perfect. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. We've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item nine is consider approval of the sports association agreement for the softball program held at Buck Thomas Park for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two season.
Vice Mayor and Council, this, this is also the agreement between the City of Moore, the Moore Parks Recreation, and the Moore Girls Softball Association. Basically, the same information as in the baseball. It, it just highlights everything that we are all obliged to do.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Call the vote.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries.
Can I have one go back? On baseball and softball, do we know how many kids participate in that annually? Just as talking points, an average number? Are there representatives here?
I don't have a representative.
Okay. I'm just curious. I'd be curious later. It doesn't have to be right now.
I'll find out for you, but I'm pretty sure there's thousands.
I, I figured as much. I figured as much. Thank you.
All right, item ten is consider approval of a five thousand dollar supplement to the small retailer relief program using coronavirus relief funds.
Vice Mayor and Council, I am here asking for your approval for a five thousand dollar supplement to the already approved one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our CRF funds. And this was go to the small retailer relief program, again, that you all funded at our last council meeting. So this five thousand dollar supplement would actually allow for thirty-one qualified applicants to each receive a five thousand dollar grant. We had thirty-four that submitted. Three were unqualified, and then thirty-one were qualified.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, great. We've had a motion in a second. No other discussion. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark, Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Thank you for your work on that.
Awesome.
They're very appreciative, very excited.
That'd really help.
Item eleven is consider awarding bid number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero, zero, seven, cardio fitness equipment to advanced exercise in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents for the purchase and installation of exercise equipment at the station.
Vice Mayor and Council, I would.
Hold on just a sec, hold on a sec.
Ms. Wood, would you present this item, please? And then others can speak.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a bid that will be for purchasing the new exercise equipment in our fitness area. We sent out bids and received those, and this is the one that we choose to purchase.
Okay.
Itemized the equipment on that. I'm sorry.
The itemized equipment, I don't have the bid with me, but all I have is the bid sheet.
Okay, 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 perfect.
Okay, is there, do, anybody have any questions for staff?
I might after their presentation real quick.
I just didn't know what it contained as far as the cardio equipment. That's pretty general, and I don't see it on the bid listed here. So are we buying like ellipticals? Are we buying spin bikes? Are we buying everything?
Bednails?
Okay.
I've had a few people question me about punching bags and things like that up there. Do we, do we purchase?
That is not included in this.
Is that something we're gonna look at?
We are gonna look at that.
I've had a few of those requests reset.
With the weight equipment, that would, the weight equipment is not included in this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for our staff? All right, we did have somebody signed up to speak on this item. If you just step to the. Why? This gentleman right here. Yeah.
For the company?
If you just state your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Schofield. I'm in nine, zero, seven, one, east, one hundred and eighteenth place in Bixby, Oklahoma.
Okay.
I would like to ask the council to submit my bid for consideration for the, for this exercise equipment. For two reasons. One, we had the inclement weather run through on February twelfth. The bids had to be submitted in person. The bid opening was moved because of the weather, but the bid due date was not. There was a miscommunication between a city employee and myself in that terminology between due date and opening. So I've got emails to back that up if that would help. I have my bid now. I would, I would actually request for it to be considered or put out to rebid.
Okay, and is there somebody else here? Frank, would you like to speak on this? Yes, sir. If you'll just come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Counsel, my name's Frank Ginoni. My company is Fitness Smith. I'm from Florida. I actually flew in today to be here to, same thing that this gentleman's doing, request that our bid gets opened. It was here on time. Unfortunately, this, FedEx wouldn't deliver because of the storm that you all had. And it, I, from what, all the tracking, it said it arrived after, I think on a Tuesday, you had your holiday on Monday, though President's holiday was on Monday. So we were here on time. I have all documentation from FedEx that it arrived the morning of, actually the night of, and it was scheduled to be delivered, and they, they stopped service.
And you guys are two different companies, correct?
Two different companies, yes.
Okay.
What, what are the names of y'all's two companies real quick?
Mine is Push Pedal Pool.
And then you're?
Fitness Smith.
Okay.
We're in Florida.
Okay. Okay.
Randy, since the bids are public now, if we were to redo it, would, would have, redo the bid, is that what, what would be the?
Yes, the authority to accept the bid was turned in. That qualifies. Or the council will reject all bids and rebid the entire.
Do we have any verification that the bids that they've submitted are the bids that were? were actually, would have been produced had they not seen the competitors?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'm saying like, did they arrive late? Did we receive a copy before we made these public? Anything like that? I'm thinking for a timeline perspective.
Are you asking about their tardiness because of the storm, or if they?
Dollar amount, because now the dollar amount.
Oh, okay, okay.
Let's let Mr. Miller speak, if we would, please.
Okay, okay, that's, I'm just asking if they were.
Go ahead. It's my understanding that the two bids that came in late were not open, so we do, I do not know what those were.
But, but we could accept, I mean, no change of the bids, we could, yeah, okay.
Do we have, do we have a way to verify what they submitted was actually their submission prior to seeing their competitor's submission?
I believe that Barbara Fergiani still has the bids that...
The two that you've submitted, okay.
Yes, I, I need to check that, but I believe that she still has them.
So Randy, we can't just add, accept those, though, we have to reject this one and then ask for resubmission, correct?
Okay.
Or accept the one.
Or accept the one.
Is there post-march, this, okay.
I have mine dated, quiet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, my, my, my first inclination would be kind of, you know, there was a deadline, there was a deadline, but the fact that there's two companies up here that...
There's a storm?
That happened, it's, that makes me concerned.
I believe it's a new contract, I mean, we can't control that, unfortunately.
And I believe that his problem with getting it here was a misunderstanding, because he had some communications with an employee.
Okay.
And to me, the email was clear, it says the bid opening has changed. The problem is, is the bid opening and the deadline was like fifteen minutes apart from each other.
Oh, geez.
So I could, I could understand that somebody who would read that would understand, I'm also changing the deadline, I could understand it. But the email, though, did say the bid opening has been changed.
I understand that.
And then late, or I'm sorry, the, the bid opening was gonna be changed. Later on, there was another email from him that said, when is the bid opening? Has that been changed? Is the deadline also the same? And that was after the deadline had already come in. And that's when I was given the email, and I thought, wait a minute, I think he is confused now with the bid opening and the bid deadline. He assumed that those were both the same.
Randy, does it matter that one bid is visible to the others? Doesn't that create a little bit of an unfair advantage?
It was already submitted, it was here. We didn't, you know, I didn't...
Right.
I feel like... Create a disadvantage to the company that got things here on time, that had all their bid documents in order, but council still has the authority to reject all bids and rebid the process.
So if we...
Could we not make public? Could we, excuse me?
Can I say something? We were here on time, it just wasn't delivered by FedEx because they said they weren't...
I understand, I understand, sir.
So we made it on time.
I understand, can I say something? So I deal with bids often in my real job, in my day job, and I'm wondering if we could make public their two bids, as well as the other bids, which have clearly been presented. And as I asked questions before this started, it's not an itemized bid that we received that's made public, it is, it is a, a joint bid. So I'm wondering if it makes it fair if we decide to rebid this, if we open those up to the public, and their bids as well, whatever they delivered that wasn't delivered on time or opened on time, and then we rebid. Does that make sense, Randy?
All bids are open records.
Even the bids that are, that we never opened from Barbara that are sitting on their table?
They'd be, they'd be open.
So we could open?
So we would open their bids.
Open those, open those bids and then?
Rebid it.
Rebid it, yes.
How long would it delay things? I mean, could we re-vote in two weeks? Can we do it that fast?
At least forty days, I think.
Equipment's not great, but it's not going to die in forty days.
It's not gonna be a problem, it's not gonna be a problem to rebid this, or...
I make a motion, we open it. I make a motion, we open their bids, publish them, and we rebid.
I second that motion.
I think that benefits all of us.
Yeah. An unexpected event.
Do we have to make a motion to reject all of these bids?
Okay.
Would be the motion?
Make a motion, we reject all bids and rebid the project.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, we've had the motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no, you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Uh, yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes. Item carries to reject all bids and reopen the process. Would bring us to item number twelve, is consider declaring six physio control life pack one thousand defibrillators that have been replaced and taken out of service as surplus and authorized donation to the Oklahoma State Firefighters Association.
Vice Mayor Council, if you remember, back in January, I gave an update about Amstat donating us six brand-new defibrillators. So these are the old ones we've taken out of service. One of them doesn't work, we have no pads for the rest of them. We would like to donate these to Oklahoma State Firefighters Association, so they can give them to smaller departments that don't have any defibrillators at all, because they have no use to us at this time.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes, item carries. Item thirteen is consider approval of a FY twenty-twenty-one budget supplement to budget additional funds for related expenses associated with CARES Act and mental health programs.
Vice Mayor and Council, we're requesting approval to budget funds received from the CARES Act to those specific accounts where those funds were spent. Many of the purchases were approved by council prior to receiving the CARES Act funding, knowing that council would, or that the city would be reimbursed when other, while other projects were identified after we received these funds, such as the ice storm cleanup, winter weather well repair, the small retail grant program, police equipment, and Southwest Twenty-Fifth Street. This budget also requests approval to budget funds received by the police department for mental health transportation and budget those funds towards police departments' mental health programs. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Okay, hearing no questions, we've had a motion in a second. Call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes, item carries. This time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item fourteen, our consent docket, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held March first, twenty-twenty-one. Acknowledge receipt of construction permit number SL zero-zero-zero-zero-one-four-two-one-zero-zero-four-six from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for construction of sanitary sewer lines as part of the southeast lift station. Ratify action of the city council regarding approval of an annual renewal of the software license to, and support agreement with the DB squared effective April first, twenty-twenty-one through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of $1,153,709.35.
Motion, we approve?
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Now we'll recess the Public Works Authority...
Do we call for the roll?
Oh, I'm ready to go, I guess. Call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes. Okay, now we'll recess the Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item fifteen is our consent docket, receive and approve the minutes of the more, of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held March first, twenty-twenty. Approve payment of a worker's compensation claim, or compensation settlement in the amount of $5,390 for CBR claim number two-zero-five-zero-zero-zero-eight-one-nine to Michael Harland. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-dash-twenty-twenty-one in the amount of $212,828.23.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes, item carries. Now we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting. I think it was Louie.
It's Adam, I think it's Adam, when Louie's not here.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys.
Nope, he's on Facebook.
Yeah, no. We'll call the roll, please. Item sixteen?
Okay. Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis? Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Cam?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Item seventeen is the consent docket, item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion, we approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes. We'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Okay, just let the record reflect that all who were here are still here. Number eighteen is new business, Citizens Forum, items not on the agenda. We did have one person sign up, Kristy Gausse. Yes, ma'am. If you'd just state your name and your address for the record.
Kristy Gausse, eight-thirteen Carol Ann Place. Forgive me, I'm not used to talking to you all, and from where I come from, from Chicago, we call it yous guys. And here, it's y'all, but I heard people say something else, and I'm like, I don't know what they're saying. Anyways, my name's Kristy Gausse. I moved to Oklahoma a little over a year ago, and moved into my house two weeks before lockdown. I've been a medical massage therapist and a member of the AMTA for seven years. I have clinical experience and worked out of my home as well, and was looking forward to doing the same here. But the lockdown made it impossible to get licensing, open a new business network, or find clientele, not to mention many massage therapists were out of work for a better part of the past year. So here I am, a year later. I've got my licensing, my business is mostly set up, and I have a small list of clientele waiting for me to open my doors. Unfortunately, when I tried to get a business license from the city, I was informed that I couldn't run this type of business out of my home because of the traffic that it would bring to my residential area. I had to laugh because I usually get busy with only three or four clients a day. So I typically spend one to two hours with each client, and then need thirty minutes between clients to clean, disinfect, do my soap notes, and have a break. I'm here today to ask that the laws or ordinances are changed, that I can work out of my home, not only to do the work that I need to do, but people need the work that I do. Everywhere I go, I look around, and I see people in pain, necks, backs, hips, knees, feet. I see it on their faces, how they hold themselves, how they walk. I've been given the education and ability to be able to help a lot of these people. I'm not a spa-type therapist, I wear scrubs, and most clients wear tank tops and shorts when I'm working on them, which makes a lot of them more comfortable and more inclined to get the work that they need done, because they don't have to undress. I work with all kinds of medical conditions, migraines, TMJ, neck pain, back pain, bulging or herniated discs, frozen shoulder, carpal tunnel, sciatica, shin splints, plantar fasciitis, neuromas. I've had special training on some very cool tools, and I absolutely love what I do. If there are any questions that I can answer, or anything I can do to help this change come about, I'd be happy to assist you in any way. Thank you for your time and hearing me on this issue, and I look forward to bringing my services to Moore.
Kristy, would you spell your first and last name for me? I'm sure it's spelled there, but... It was close, just so you know. Thank you. So if you had multiple clients, even a client that was early, at most, we're talking about two additional cars at your house, because you said usually you have about thirty minutes in between, but you would have to have a client more than thirty minutes early for the traffic to be an issue, to be two cars? Okay, I'm, I just wanted to verify that.
But what, but what we're talking about is, I mean, it's just not allowed by ordinance, correct? Like, that's...
Right.
Sure, so home occupations, we actually have two separate ordinances that will deal with massage therapy. First, we have the home occupation, which is basically, you can't have a business in your home that would invite public into your home. And there's certain occupations that are specifically listed in the ordinance that is prohibited, and one of those is like hairdresser, and then the list goes on. So obviously, a massage therapist is not a specific list listed as prohibited, but the general rule of thumb is, if you're inviting people to your home, then, you know, we have said that you cannot operate a home business. The other ordinances that are in effect are actually the massage therapy licensing ordinances, which dictates the requirements that must take place as far as building code to maintain as safe and, and comfortable business. So if we, if, if the council would like to revisit the home occupation ordinance, we're happy to do that.
But it's gonna open, it's not just gonna open up her...
It'd be kind of hard to isolate this just to her, is the problem.
Right.
Correct. And there's no way that we can monitor like how many cars come. If we say that an occupation is allowable to take place in the home...
It's allowable, isn't it?
Then it's allowable. So, and that's kind of why we have the home occupation ordinance set up the way it is, is because it's very difficult to monitor, and it generally will create some complaints from the neighbors, because that's just the nature of living in a neighborhood.
We've definitely had that here before, yeah. So of the opposite of people upset by the traffic and things, so. Is there anything we can try to explore that would benefit her individually without expanding too far, would become a disruption in other areas, potentially?
I mean, I'm happy to look into that.
Yeah.
I don't, can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I mean, I can definitely do some research.
Some other cities have something, maybe?
That's what I was gonna say, are we comparable to other cities, or is there something that we could look at?
I think our problem, Kristin, is to find a solution that wouldn't cause issues elsewhere. So we give you your solution, but then we created a whole new issues.
Right. And when I was in Utah, where I ran my other home business, they had certain things in place, so I'm not gonna have any employees, so there's not gonna be this big thing of
place, so I'm not gonna have any employees, so there's not gonna be this big thing of traffic, it's me, one-on-one.
But you might not, but the next home business might, that's the, that's the problem.
But if you put that in your, if you change the wording and allow only one person, and have it one-on-one or something like that, maybe that would help things, I don't know.
Elizabeth, I would be very interested to know what neighboring cities, cities do as far as home businesses, hair salons and that type of thing.
Cities in general, maybe not just neighboring.
No, we're, we're happy to look into this.
Probably open up a lot of money, and, you know, inspectors have to come to the house. I, I had home inspections from health inspectors, and it might open up a lot more businesses.
That's helpful.
Thank you, it looks like our city staff will look into it and, and maybe, and get back with the council and let us know.
Thank you.